Called order, the Wednesday, September 9th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees. If you'd still please stand and join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, as we move on to item 1.03, adoption of the agenda, we have an item to take care of first, and that's to add a item to the agenda. There's a recommendation to add a item 9.8 to precede 9.01 with respect to considering whether or not to join a class action pertaining to the opioid crisis. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add an item 9.8 preceding 9.01?
Move for a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to add 9.8, and is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. That takes us to item 1.03, adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for the September 9th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be adopted as presented and amended.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That takes us into the recognition section of the agenda. Item 2.01, recognition of Mr. Ben Demakis as the 2020 Whole Brain Teaching Principal of the Year. Ms. Hickel.
Thank you, President Curry, Mr. Barker, members of the board, guests. We're happy to be able to honor LaSalle Principal, Mr. Ben Demakis, tonight in receiving a national award. To better understand this accomplishment, I want to share a little bit about Whole Brain Teaching and his work to bring Whole Brain Teaching to School City of Mishawaka. The goal of Whole Brain Teaching is to create peaceful classrooms of orderly fun, to support teachers and students, and to ensure that we're maximizing brain science. Whole Brain Teaching uses what we know about brain science to maximize visual and audio cues for attention-getters, for brain-engagers, direct instruction, and collaborative learning. When Mr. Demakis became Principal of LaSalle last year, he recognized the need to support teachers and students. He reached out to the curriculum and instruction department and decided he wanted to pilot Whole Brain Teaching at LaSalle. After a successful pilot at LaSalle last year, he decided, we decided, to expand Whole Brain Teaching into our virtual summer school program with our elementary students. They used Whole Brain Teaching to support virtual learning and piloted the virtual learning in summer school, and we learned a lot from that experience. Mr. Demakis worked hard to train and debrief our summer school staff and made believers out of our summer school teachers. They saw the power of Whole Brain Teaching. In preparation for virtual learning at the start of the 2020-21 school year, once again, Mr. Demakis led the efforts to expand Whole Brain Teaching to all of our buildings. And in collaboration with Whole Brain Teaching's national coaches, we worked to offer training to all of our teachers, even our secondary teachers. We have highlighted this graphic before, the one that you can see that talks about supporting the whole child in our MTSS process before, but what you'll note this time is that our classroom supports are provided by Whole Brain Teaching and were brought to us by Ben's work in this area. I certainly have plenty of praise for Mr. Demakis myself and his great work, but we thought it might be more powerful to have someone else share with you why Mr. Demakis is so deserving in this award. So here tonight, we have asked Mr. Chris Biffle to speak some words. He's a founding member of the Whole Brain Teaching Network, and he has worked closely throughout the past year with Mr. Demakis, and he can explain to you why Mr. Demakis is so deserving of this award. So Bruce, if you would click on that supporting the whole child graphic.
It was... He's a real experimental educator, and he just loves his kids. He loves his kids. He loves his teachers, and his heart is absolutely in the right place. He's a rare breed and the best principal easily this year that we work with. He's a real experimental educator, and he just loves his kids. He loves his kids. He loves his teachers.
It was so good. We want to hear it twice. And then if you could go back to the slides. Perfect. So we certainly couldn't agree more with Mr. Biffle's high praise for Mr. Demakis, and we believe that he is truly an exceptional leader. We are so proud and so happy to have him on the leadership team at School City of Mishawaka. So at this time, it is a great honor to know that Mr. Ben Demakis was named the 2020 Whole Brain Teaching Principal of the Year. Ben, if you would please come forward. Or at least stand, Bob. Thank you, Bob. So I was going to close with that same idea. Our brains are thinking the same thing, Bob. Ben has a mantra for LaSalle this year to help them to stay focused and grounded because they have certainly seen a lot of success in Ben's first year at LaSalle. And so he does. He slaps that sign, reminds his staff, Bob slaps that sign that says, "Don't believe the hype." Good reason to celebrate, but also keeping ourselves grounded and eyes on the prize that we're still growing. And so, once again, I think Mr. Biffle wraps this up pretty well. So if you could play that second clip really quickly.
It was a slam dunk. It was... I worked with about 10 teachers from around the country or on the executive board. Everybody said, "Yeah, Ben's the guy." We will say this, and Ben knows it, that our approval of Ben is 100% conditional. We don't give unconditional approval. We are giving him our praise and award on the condition that he continues, not just day by day, but hour by hour, to be wonderful.
in this room and in all the projects that we've undertaken and in the successes that we've we've achieved and couldn't be more grateful for that and it's a this is a very great honor for you, well deserved, and we feel we feel honored that we're this is the first place you it's been publicly announced.
Thank you, Dr. Spiker. Thank you.
And I think we all agree. Thank you. All right, that concludes the recognition section of the agenda, and this is where we traditionally say if there are people here just for that section, this would be a time to, you know, take your leave if you don't want to sit through the business part, which of course is always the most important part and even if not the most interesting part of the meeting. We're now in the comments and questions from the floor. Item 3.01, representatives of the PTA. Is there anyone from the PTA who would like to address the board? If not, going on to item 3.02, representatives of school employees. All right. Item 3.03, representatives of the Mishawaka Education Foundation. This is Spiker.
Mr. Barker, President Curry, board members and guests, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you here tonight. I want to congratulate all of you on the hard work you've done in preparing the students for school this year, all the challenges that you've faced because of COVID. It's just remarkable what you've been able to do, and I'd like, on behalf of the Mishawaka Education Foundation, commend all of you for the hard work it took to get that done. The MEF, School City of Mishawaka Teacher Resource Center, is going to be open. It's going to be opening on September the 14th, and it's designed to be a free store of resources for teachers and students. It will, we are now seeking permanent location for that. It's going to be held here at School City at the beginning, but if anyone knows of a place within the community where we can hold that or have that office located, we would appreciate it very much. If you're looking for a unique Christmas gift or for that special someone, a shower gift, wedding, baby, check out the online auction of Growing the Future. I won't read you the long link to it, but it's hosted by the Mishawaka Education Foundation. So if you go to mef.org, you'll be able to find that and look at for some great auction items. The Growing the Future Dinner and Auction was something that's one of our biggest fundraisers of the year, and unfortunately, because of COVID, it's taken a hit, and we're not going to be able to meet in person. But we didn't want it to stop us from raising money for the students of School City. So what we've done is we're going to be having a drive-through extravaganza on Thursday, October the 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Mishawaka Holiday Inn parking lot. Please plan on attending to experience SCM Fine Arts students to honor the Mishawaka Lions Club for their contribution to the SCM Fine Arts throughout the years. Pick up your auction items and help MEF with their our largest fundraisers. Tickets are available online or through Jane Wright, who is the executive director of MEF. P.S., I just want to thank you for participating in the 2020 MEF payroll deduction campaign that's going on now. So those of you faculty and staff, members that are here, thank you very much for that participation. And one last thing, we still have the 50-50 cash raffle. Tickets are available tonight. For just $25, you can win up to $25,000. So if you're interested in that, please see me after the meeting. Thank you for this opportunity.
And thank you. Item 3.04, general public. We've had one person sign up to address the board this evening, Mr. Strawn.
Mr. President, School Board members, Mr. Barker, ladies and gentlemen, I have both agenda-specific and non-agenda questions this evening. First, I would like to thank Mr. Corey LeBon for providing answers to a few of the selected questions I posed at the July 8, 2020, School Board meeting. I will address the remaining open unanswered questions from the July 8 meeting in a few moments. The agenda-specific questions for this evening. Item 6.02, partnership with Habitat for Humanity for St. Joseph County in School City of Mishawaka. Question number one, after 40 successful years of building single-family residential structures on their own without any formal outside partnership assistance, what were the specific motivating factors in forming this partnership agreement with the St. Joseph County Habitat for Humanity? Question number two, how long do you expect this St. Joseph County Habitat for Humanity partnership to last? And question three, would the Mishawaka Building Trades Incorporated consider other potential building trades-related partnership agreements with other nonprofit or public entities? Item 8.02, purchase of John Young Middle School replacement devices. Who is the School City of Mishawaka point person for the FEMA grant mentioned in this agenda item? Item 8.03, purchase of Bloxy, I think that's how you pronounce that, Internet filtering. Question here is, is the purchase of this software being accomplished via a cooperative purchasing agreement or via the open market? If open market, how many vendors were solicited and how many quotes were received? Item 9.02, recommendation to approve agreement with the Elkhart Area Career Center. Question number one, was the current estimated number of School City students attending the Elkhart Career Center? Question two, the Elkhart Career Center webpage states that the Career Center services 12 local high schools. Article 3 of the proposed agreement with the Elkhart Career Center addresses a local advisory board for career and technical education, composed exclusively of members selected by the Elkhart Community School Corporation. Question here is, has School City ever raised the issue of customer representation on this advisory board? If so, when and what were the results of that inquiry? And lastly, for this item, does School City of Mishawaka have meaningful accounting insight into the total operating cost of the Elkhart Career Center program as set forth in the formula shown in Article 6 of the agreement? And what has been the total operating cost trend for the Elkhart Career Center over the last five school years? Now for the non-agenda open questions, the interest of time and not boring people and protection of the guilty parties, I will refrain from repeating all six questions, but suffice it to say that in 55 days, registered School City of Mishawaka voters will get to choose two school board members from a pool of five very qualified candidates. Answers to the above and other future operational questions will be used to determine just how well school board members and their agents have executed their mission and managed the resources entrusted to them by the taxpayer. That concludes my questions for this evening, Mr. President. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Strawn. Takes us into the consent agenda section. Item 4.01, approval of amendments of the August 5, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees. It is recommended that the amendments of the August 5, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Item 4.02, approval of amendments of the August 19, 2020, Executive Meeting of the Board of School Trustees. It is recommended that the amendments of the August 19, 2020, Executive Meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Item 4.03, approval of amendments of the July 29, 2020, Special Meeting of the Board of School Trustees. It is recommended that the amendments of the July 29, 2020, Special Meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Item 4.04, approval of bill warrants and payroll. It is recommended that the bill warrants and payroll in the amount of $6,469,406.37 be approved for payment from the appropriate funds. Item 4.05, approval of July financial report. It is recommended that the Board approve the July 2020 financial report as presented. Item 4.06, acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board approve the donations as presented, being a monetary donation of $400 from the Beta Gamma Chapter of TriKappa to Mishawaka High School, of which $100 went to the Drama Department and 300 was assigned to emergency student needs. And also a monetary donation of $3,858 from Crossroads Community Church, the Mishawaka Campus, to School City of Mishawaka for student needs. Item 4.07, approval of consent agenda. Is there a recommendation that the Board of School Trustees approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move for approval.
They moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, in the vision initiative section of the agenda, item 5.01, roadmap to reopening plan update number five. Mr. Barker, Mr. Calderon, and Mr. LeBon.
Thank you, Mr. Curry and members of the board. Last week, Governor Holcomb and Dr. Fox of the Indiana State Department of Health released new metrics and guidelines for all counties in Indiana to use regarding decisions for reopening schools. The purpose of the roadmap to reopening plan update number five that we will present to you tonight is to approve the changes made to the plans since our last School Board meeting on August 5th, and to review how the new metrics will impact School City of Mishawaka, and to discuss the recommendation to move to Phase 2 of our reopening plan. So tonight, we'll give you this fifth update, which seems that we've been in in this dealing with the pandemic now for for nearly six months. So this is our fifth update to you concerning our reopening plan. And before we start, I just want to thank our teachers, our staff, administrators, senior leaders, for all of the work that's gone into getting us to this place right now where we currently are in what we're still calling Phase 1. As you recall, we're only option only that we were committed to through at minimum September 18th. So it's now time to look ahead to what will change in Phase 2 as we bring back students to School City of Mishawaka for an in-person learning option. So we're ready, I think, for slide 2. We can find that one up there. A fair question, everyone is now looking to make a change from option Phase 1 to this now Phase 2. And I think all of you know that Dr. Fox of the St. Joe County Department of Health had provided guidelines that we were using to make decisions, and we have used those metrics and guidelines up to this point of our Phase 1. But two weeks ago, when the governor and Dr. Fox of the Indiana State Department of Health released the new metrics, we wanted to use those. They were encouraging all schools to use those metrics now so that all communities across the state would have a new, more consistent way for everyone to make decisions and for school communities to understand those decisions as we move forward. And the dashboard for that metric will be updated every Wednesday. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see some maps. And on the far left of that map, you'll see that there are some metrics provided. The first two weeks, the Indiana State Department of Health was using three metrics to determine the color level for each county in the state. And the color levels went from blue, yellow, orange, to red, with red meaning the most hot, highest hotspot for coronavirus spread in the state. So early on those first two maps that were issued on each of the past three Wednesdays, and we have updated this presentation to include today's map with, that was just released today on September 9. But the first two weeks, we were using three metrics, and those metrics were the number of new cases per 100,000 residents per day, the percent positivity rate on those being tested, and the change in percent positivity rate. However, going into this week, the Indiana State Department of Health has changed that, and they've deleted the third metric, which was the change in percent positivity rate. And the reason for that is somewhat twofold. In small counties, it was it was a very volatile number. If very few people were being tested and the rate changed drastically because of that, it could have an adverse effect on the decisions those people were making with their schools because of just low population. And then also, it was found that in some counties that were using the rapid test, that only the positive tests were being included in the state data. So that was obviously having an impact. So that percent positivity rate has now been taken out of the metric that the State Department is using for counties to use. So if you look at the map up there, you'll see that St. Joe County, we're in the top county in the center, basically, and you see the first two maps show us at an orange level, and then the third map that came out today shows us at the yellow level. So moving to the next slide, the State Department of Health has offered guidance to schools to use for specifically for schools to use based upon what color level that they are in. As you know, we were in an orange level the first two, we're now at a yellow level. That also mirrors really the St. Joe County metrics because we're also showing improvement in the St. Joe County metrics as well. A few weeks ago, all of those metrics were red, and now two are red and two are yellow. So those are improving as well. So we're encouraged by that, that that recent data that we're seeing for St. Joe County. Dr. Fox, who's again with the State Department of Health, not to be confused with Dr. Fox of the St. Joe County Department of Health, and I hope I don't confuse that tonight, but she encouraged, on the very first week that they came out with this guidance, which was now two weeks ago, she encouraged all schools who are not yet in person to bring back elementary students first. She stated that the benefits to these children of being in schools outweighs the risk of community spread. So she was saying, if you're not in school yet, please make plans to bring your elementary children back because the the risk to them is not worth what they're actually going through by not being in school. So looking at this guidance, we feel that we can safely reopen our schools following the recommendation of the orange level to open our grade schools in person and to open our middle school and high school in a hybrid learning model, which is the recommendation of the orange level. So, go ahead, Bruce, to the next slide if you would. So I want to say, first of all, a special thanks to the board. We've been working throughout this pandemic, and you've been in great communication with all of us, and we appreciate the fact that you're leading us work through this in a as nimble way as possible so that we can react to the changes that we see. And obviously, there have been many changes from mid-March to now. But it was very beneficial for us to be able to announce this change of moving to Phase 2 last week to start gathering the information that we need to do that safely, and you'll hear more about that plan as we move forward. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. LeBon. He and Mr. Calderon have been leading our reopening task force efforts and appreciate them, and all of our senior leaders for the work that's gone into this plan. So, Mr. LeBon.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Good evening, board members. I've been looking at our our students in grades K through 6. We are here this evening to officially recommend two student learning options for Phase 2, in-person instruction and live virtual learning. Both of these models will be five days a week, beginning on Monday, September 21st, following normal elementary school hours of 8:45 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. daily. In-person instruction is exactly as it sounds, with the addition of the the health and the safety measures that we put into place, and we're going to continue to talk through here yet this evening. Whereas live virtual learning will be similar to the model that we've been following throughout Phase 1 or since the beginning of our of our current school year. We are not asking our general education elementary teachers to support students who are participating in in-person instruction and the live virtual option simultaneously. We're going to staff the live virtual instruction separately from our our students receiving instruction in our buildings. And as of right now, it's our current intentions to finalize and communicate those assignments based on the applications that we receive by the end of this current week. We are excited to welcome back our youngest learners through the Growing Together Preschool Program at Beager Elementary and LaSalle Elementary starting on October 1st. A virtual learning option will be available for students with disabilities, and Mrs. Michaelis has been hard at work with Mrs. Janice White, the Director of the Growing Together Preschool, to ensure a safe and healthy transition back to the building for our littlest learners. As Mr. Barker mentioned, following the the guidance of the Indiana State Department of Health and assuming your approval this evening, we're excited to welcome back our students at John Young Middle School and Mishawaka High School in a reduced capacity by offering a 50-50 hybrid instructional model, as well as an entirely virtual learning model, beginning on Monday, October 5, 2020. The 50-50 hybrid model follows, excuse me, allows students to follow their typical class schedule, attending halftime in person and halftime virtually. Teachers will use technology to support their students who are in the virtual environment and in person simultaneously, allowing all courses to remain on pace together while minimizing the disruptions to the master schedule, and allows us the ability to continue to offer all of the courses to all of our students. Students will be divided into two groups. Alphabetically, Group A will be last names A through L, whereas Group B will be last names M through Z. Group A will participate in person Mondays and Tuesdays with alternating Wednesdays, and then participate in classes virtually on Thursdays and Fridays. Group B will participate virtually on Mondays and Tuesdays with alternating Wednesday, while participating in person on Thursday and on Friday. Students who elect to remain in an all-virtual environment will participate in their classes virtually five days a week with both their group A and their group B peers. Students, or excuse me, families of students in grades 7 through 12 will be asked to make their commitment to either the 50-50 hybrid instructional model or the entirely virtual option via Skyward. That form or that commitment option will open up this coming Saturday, September 12, and we're asking that families submit those responses to us by September 20th at 9:00 p.m. Again, that's via Skyward. With our instructional models established, the next step was to gather a commitment from our K to 6 families to better understand how they want their children to receive their instruction through the remainder of our first semester, which is through December 18, 2020. There are certainly obviously a lot of numbers and figures on this chart here. However, what I would like for you to, or draw your attention to specifically, is that response rate of 88.3%. That number there is representative of a lot of hard work of our building level of principals, all of our teachers and building secretaries, who have followed up with those that we did not initially receive a response from, and I would anticipate that even as of right now, that that number is higher than even 88.3%. We pulled these numbers as of late last night, but even so, they were still hard at work at getting that. At this time, with that response rate, we are projecting that 76.7% of our students in grades K through 6 will pursue the in-person model, whereas 23.3 will continue with the live virtual learning. In preparation for the return to in-person instruction, we released building-specific reopening plans last week that outline more detailed information, like arrival and dismissal procedures, recess zones per building, expectations for lunch and hallways that are unique to each building. This information was sent to families directly from building administrators, but it's also accessible in our district-wide roadmap to reopening plan. In addition to the release of the building-specific roadmap plans, we obviously continue to make updates and changes to our our district plan that align with the most recent guidance from local and state health officials. But throughout all of those changes, we continue to follow our guiding principles of making sure that we are balancing the educational priorities of our students, but also the safety and the well-being of our students and of our staff. Some of the modifications that we've made since the last boarding, board meeting reflect the information that Mr. Barker spoke about at the beginning of our meeting in regards to understanding the trends and community spread and how those metrics impact our daily operations here at School City of Mishawaka. When we think about the logistics around communicating when there is a positive case in one of our facilities, we will contact the St. Joe County Department of Health to assess the factors, such as the likelihood of exposure to other students and staff in the buildings. We'll look at specifically proximity, duration of exposure, different mitigation strategies that were put in place, and to what extent they were followed. And then in each case, of course, determine the appropriate course of action. In any situation, we will, of course, make sure that we contact impacted families, students, staff immediately if there is a possibility of exposure, but we are not going to issue general notifications anytime that there is a positive case to the community at large or to our staff unless it's determined necessary per health officials. We would like to mention the availability of before and after-school programming. This is through Boys and Girls Club of St. Joe County. We're really appreciative of our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, specifically the CEO, Jaclyn Kronk, and her team. She's been incredibly supportive, she's been working really diligently, and families can expect to receive more information about that through our district-wide reopening plan if they're interested in pursuing that. A few additional updates include the expectation of universal masking for all of our staff and our students while on SCM property. This will be a shift in language from what we initially presented many months ago. This is updated, again, in accordance with the most recent guidance from state and local health officials. It also includes the expectation that our parents will continue to be good partners with our schools in wearing a mask when they're dropping off their students or picking up their children from school if they're on foot. Obviously, if they remain in their vehicle, they don't need to wear a mask, but if they get out of their vehicle, you know, of course, we're going to kindly ask that they they continue to be that good partner and wear that mask. There are going to be a handful of exceptions to that mask policy, such as not wearing a mask during lunch for obvious reasons, making accommodations for students with disabilities as it's determined through a case conference committee. However, it should be expected that students will be in masks for the majority of the school day, and teachers will create intentional but safe opportunities for for students to to take those masks off. It could be an example of a teacher begins his or her lesson for the day, and at that time, they make the make it clear that all students, all sitting on their desks facing in the same direction, have the option to remove their mask for approximately 10 minutes while they do that mini lesson, at which point, once that concludes, they would be instructed to put that mask back on, and then they could move about their room as they as they needed to. Much like many of us have obviously heard, our ability to continue offering the option of in-person instruction is reliant on the and it's a shared and collective responsibility of each of us to wear our masks, adhere to the guidelines of social distancing, and to practice good personal hygiene. To support our community, our school community, our families, we've added the new screening tool to the roadmap to reopening. This is from the ISDH, and families are encouraged to use that when they screen their students on a daily basis and before they send those students to one of our facilities. And then the final change that we wanted to talk through here is more specific guidelines in terms of spacing and the physical distancing within our classrooms. So at this time, I would invite you to Twin Branch Elementary to learn more about the plans that we have as far as the preparation for the return to students later this month.
Hello and welcome to Liberty Elementary. Our custodial and maintenance staff has been working diligently at all nine Mishawaka schools to make sure we are using the most effective and highest quality equipment, cleaners, and sanitizers to get our schools ready for the students to return to the classroom. While students were gone, we researched the latest products available in the industry. We've invested in the latest, most
Welcome to Twin Branch. We are also excited for our students to be back in-person for learning. We have safety measures in place to maintain a healthy learning environment for all of our students and our staff. Upon entering our school buildings, students must have their masks on. Students will use hand sanitizer prior to sitting down at their desk. When seated, students will take out their Chromebook and materials. There will be no sharing of any materials. Backpacks will then be placed behind their desk. Teachers and students will wear their masks, covering their mouth and nose, and must be worn at all times. Students must also face forward at their desk while seated. All desks will be between three and six feet apart from one another. When lining up to exit the classroom, all students will maintain social distancing and will walk on the right side of their hallway to their next destination. We are so excited to see you. Can't wait until September the 21st.
With all of our building principals and our teachers to make sure that our classrooms are prepared. At this time, School City of Mishawaka has over 20,000, 20,000 reusable and disposable masks in stock. All School City of Mishawaka students will receive two reusable masks and a lanyard on the first day of school. We have also been stockpiling other PPE, hand sanitizer, and cleaning solutions. To talk a little bit more about healthy buildings, I would like to introduce Mr. Mike Faulkner, Director of Operations for School City of Mishawaka.
Hello and welcome to Liberty Elementary. Our custodial and maintenance staff has been working diligently at all nine Mishawaka schools to make sure we are using the most effective and highest quality equipment, cleaners, and sanitizers to get our schools ready for the students to return to the classroom. While students were gone, we researched the latest products available in the industry. We've invested in the latest, most effective equipment, including Clorox T360 electrostatic sprayer. It will kill all viruses, including COVID-19 and the flu. There's always a concern about air quality in enclosed buildings. According to the CDC, carbon monoxide levels should not reach 1,200 parts per million. Mishawaka Schools HVAC units are equipped with sensors, they never reach 1,000 parts per million. If that level is reached, it automatically opens the dampers, allowing fresh air to draw in and be recirculated. Therefore, it is safe to say that our classrooms will recirculate fresh air two to three times every hour. Another enhancement we've invested in at every school is brand-new water bottle dispensers placed throughout the buildings. Students will no longer be drinking from the fountains. Instead, they'll bring a personal water bottle from home and fill it with clean filtered water at one of these stations. I want you to know, our staff, for the custodial and maintenance staff will be working around the clock to ensure a safe return for all Mishawaka students, and we really look forward to having them back.
As Mr. Faulkner mentioned, the goal of the Operations Department is to create a safe physical space for our staff and for our students. While as school building, by keeping the school building safe, keeping surfaces clean, focusing on bathroom safety, and using Plexiglas as a physical barrier, and that's just to mention a few of the many protocols that have been put into place and the work that's been happening over the last several months to update our buildings. Thinking about healthy policies and in order to better serve our SEM staff, if the need arises, we would like to offer the opportunity for qualifying work groups to work remotely. As such, we have communicated the SEM temporary remote working options to staff this past week. This new policy entails two components, remote working while under quarantine and remote working due to family or personal illness. Both of these temporary options would be in addition to any time provided, as emergency paid sick leave under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and do not require eligible staff to use personal days or to go and compensate it if that situation arises. We've dealt with many different cases over the last several months, and what we don't want to do is ever put our staff in the position in which they feel they have to pick between the safety of themselves and their own families or their students, and doing what's right by staying home. If we can offer them that option to work remotely, we're certainly going to do so and support them throughout that process as, as we need to. So we're excited to be offering this policy as, as another temporary option to support our staff during this unique time. The final section of our update this evening involves healthy schedules and specifically food service and what students and families can expect during lunch at our buildings. More information about providing meals to our elementary students who are pursuing the live virtual option will be forthcoming. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Peggy Bear, Food Service Coordinator, followed by Mr. Brad Addison, Principal of Emmens Elementary School.
Hello and welcome to the LaSalle Elementary School cafeteria. The food service staff is excited about having our students return to us. Our ladies in all our schools have been busy packing and serving lunches to our virtual students, and we would like to show you a little bit of how we plan to package our meals when the students return. Students will be able to choose their own milk and continue to pick up a bag of items such as fruit and a vegetable, and then take a container of hot food and continue to their seat. All food items are wrapped, pre-packed, and bagged. Masks will be worn the entire time food is prepped, gloves will be worn, and face shields will be worn during serving time. At the end of the lunch hours, our cafeteria staff will clean and sanitize all prep areas, including cafeteria tables, with an approved CDC cleaner. The food service staff has been working nonstop to see that our children and families have been served nutritious and safe meals. We look forward to seeing all of you and your happy smiles as you enjoy your nutritious lunches at all of our elementaries in person.
Welcome to Emmens Elementary. Today, we're going to spend a few minutes going over lunch procedures and protocols that we put in place to make sure we're providing our students at Emmens and every school in School City of Mishawaka a enjoyable and safe lunch experience. Here at Emmens Elementary, we will use both the cafeteria and the stage in our gymnasium so that we can maintain social distancing during lunch. We recognize that lunch is an important part of the day, so we researched ways to be able to provide our students a safe and enjoyable lunch period that would provide them with the much-needed socialization time that young children need. These Plexiglas dividers were made in-house by School City of Mishawaka employees, using facilities at Mishawaka High School, along with some help from the Engineering Department. This way, we can maintain social distancing and still sit four boys and girls at each table while keeping them safe while eating. We are following CDC guidelines for cleaning and sanitizing. Both the tables and dividers will be cleaned and sanitized between each lunch period. Anytime students are transitioning from one part of the building to another, they are required to wear a mask. This includes lunch. Students will keep their masks on while in the lunch line. When a student is seated and ready to eat, they will be allowed to remove their mask. However, if a student needs to leave their seat for any reason, such as going to the trash can, going to the bathroom, or getting a drink, they must put their mask back on before leaving their seat. Parents, we just want to thank you for entrusting your students with us through their educational journey. We just want you to know that their health and safety is our top priority.
I hope it's evident the work that's, that's gone, gone on over the last several months in preparation for what is now September 21st and then October 5th. We are thrilled. We really are. We, we are so confident that the best learning happens inside of our classrooms, and I know that our teachers are, are working hard to prepare. I hope the students are getting excited, and we look forward to the next couple of weeks and having them back, back in our buildings. Before I turn it over to Mr. Barker, I would like to very just quickly acknowledge the work of Ms. Meg Sauer, Mr. Matt Rendell, the entire Mishawaka Network team, for producing all of those videos on a relatively short timeline. They've done a great job, and we appreciate all of their help. Thank you. Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Labana. As, as he stated already, I think we've, we've really done an excellent job of offering a robust virtual learning experience for our families, and, and I'm proud of that work. But as he, as he stated, nothing replaces what happens when a student is in a classroom with their teacher and their peers. And we look forward to being able to provide those in-person learning opportunities for our families and return students to school. We know that having, having our students out of school has, has caused hardships for our families. We have families that rely on us to not only educate their children, but to also provide care for them so that they can work and earn the livelihoods that they need to provide for their families. So we're committed to coming back and to doing so safely to protect our students and staff throughout that. As I've shared with you, we'll continue to follow the guidance from Dr. Brad Johnson that I've shared throughout the pandemic of relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. So at this time, it's recommended by the administration that the Board of School Trustees approve the changes made to the SEM roadmap to reopening 2020 and transition to Phase Two of the plan, including the option for K-6 students who wish to return to in-person instruction beginning September 21st, and for students in grades seven, seven through 12 who wish to return to a 50/50 hybrid instructional model beginning October 5th as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would like to make a couple of comments. First, I think it's very apparent that the plan is well-thought-out, well-prepared, and there have been a lot of people working hard behind the scenes. Good job, very good job. And I think there are, as the survey has pointed out, there are a lot of families that are eagerly, eagerly awaiting this decision tonight to get their kids back in school. So thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as well. I work with parents all over the country in what I do at Crow. And when I pick up the phone to call them, my first question is always, what's going on with your kids in school? Are they in school? Are they virtual learning? What have you decided to do for the safety of your family? And a lot of my, my friends at work, they say that, oh, we've, we've already gone back to school, but our school system really hasn't communicated well with us. We're not really sure what's going on. And I'd like to say that I'm so happy to say that I cannot make that comment. I can't say that I am uninformed and those around me are uninformed of what's going on over the last six months. The administration, the families, the parents, everyone in this room has really put in a lot of effort to make sure that people are not only informed, but they're involved in the process. And I think that that has drawn this community together, but I think we're all ready to go back to school, and I'm excited. So thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work.
I think it's evident that it's well-thought-out, well-organized, and I'm sure it'll be well-executed. Thank you for the work put into this.
Anything else?
I would like to say, can you hear me?
Yes, Holly, we can.
Sorry, no one could hear me earlier. Anyway, I would like to say that I'm, I'm appreciative of the staff that has worked diligently to put this plan back together. I am all for going back to school in person with all grade levels, so I am happy to hear that the high school is at least starting that. I would say that I am impressed with the staff, the teachers, who have been working through the, the issues during virtual learn with Canvas and Skyward and internet issues and, and all of that. So as hard as they've been working, I think is as hard as they've been hoping that these kids will be back in school, so I'm looking forward to it. And you can say that the Parks family is very excited school is starting.
Yes, thank you. And I too appreciate very much all of the thought and incredible hard work that's gone into this. Hopefully, this will be behind us soon, but so much remains unknown. And until we have a solution that returns us to where we used to be, it's, this pandemic and the health issues are going to significantly influence many of our decisions and practices. And recognizing that there is no single plan that works for all families, we've worked diligently, developed this reopening plan that we're about to, I believe, approve tonight, so that families can choose the option that works best for them. For those who choose to keep their children at home or offering quality virtual instruction so they can continue to self-isolate, and for those who prefer in-person instruction or whose personal situation simply doesn't allow them, you know, to keep their children at home while they earn a living, we're going to be providing in-person instruction with enhanced sanitation, social distancing, and masking precautions to protect their children, themselves, and our staff. I also want to thank our teachers and all of our staff for the way that they're stepping up to this challenge, and also ask our families to support our teachers and to help us at School City look after our educators' health and well-being. Our teachers are on the front line in helping us get through this, and our playing roles, I think, are every bit as vital and heroic as the healthcare providers and other first responders who choose to put themselves at risk in service to others, and in this case, our children. So, I mean, directed to the families, ask that you please work with us, and we ask you to support our classroom's social distancing, masking, and other mitigation measures, because those who are teaching virtually also need and deserve our understanding and support. We anticipate issues with technology. We aren't asking you to ignore them when they arise, because they almost certainly will. But instead, what we ask you to do is to respond to them with patience and bring them to our attention, so that we can learn from them and, and use the family's feedback to improve our performance. I know this isn't ideal for anyone. However, one of Mishawaka's great strengths is a strong sense of community that expresses itself with resilience in the face of adversity and compassion for our neighbors. So if we share this burden and face these challenges together with grace and respect for each other's individual decisions and circumstances, and I think we're going to come through this ordeal just fine, intact with renewed sense of appreciation for each other and our shared sacrifices, so in anticipation of, of what we're all going to be going through, I thank everybody for their patience and their understanding. Anything else before we, we have a motion in a second? It's time for the vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. We're now in the Reports and Discussion Items section of the agenda. Item 6.01, Early College Dual Credit and Advanced Placement Update. Mr. Ross?
I'm always wearing this mask. So anyway, President Curry, board members, and Mr. Barker, this is a relatively brief update. Hopefully, we can find the slides. Not many, luckily. So this is our sixth year of early college, and a year and a half ago, we were the first high school in St. Joe County to be an endorsed early college program, or an endorsed early college high school, so that was a, a nice outcome. 2019, obviously, was the first cohort to finish two, two years ago, and the program has been in the 60 to 100 range since then. We're looking at trying to find a way, and even with the limitations of dealing with the restrictions of COVID-19, about finding ways to really reach an even greater number of kids, and we're looking at some things that I'll discuss in a minute about that. The second row really talks about the number of credits that they've earned, and it's a phenomenal number of credits. I would say on average, most kids are earning at least 15, many are earning 30. And starting with the class of 2020, we had 19 kids get a one-year certificate and two actually get an associate's degree. And our projections for this year could be as many as 19 kids getting an associate's degree, which is a nice number, okay? And obviously, doubling the And obviously doubling the number of one-year certificates. So the program is, is doing well. Next slide. All right, so in the class of 2020, again, a very large number of kids have done an amazing thing. One of the things in the second bullet, though, is that that particular student got a four-year scholarship, sports scholarship, but he entered that school with 48 transferred dual credits. So he's likely going to be able to get a year, maybe even a year and a half of grad school paid for on the sports scholarship that he went on. So not a bad place to be. All right, next. All right, so we're always looking at ways to offer new courses. We've got some things going on with culinary, so it'll be our first class in the Family and Consumer Science Department to get dual credit. And that's in the advanced culinary programs where we do some of the catering, not so much right now, but at some point in a, you know, event near you. All right. Also, we've worked very well with Meg Sauer, Matt Rendell, and Ivy Tech, and we now have the radio and TV program earning dual credit as well. And advanced manufacturing has exploded. About 10 years ago, we had three teachers in the Industrial Tech Department, and we now have six. And a lot of that's happened really in the last few years. And we've done a great job, I think, expanding the CTE program in that area. And a lot of those classes, in fact, are dual credit as well. Next slide. All right, so one of the things that I mentioned at the beginning of this is that one of the things that we think is a obvious, but yet heretofore unexplored opportunity is how do we take the kids that qualify for the 21st Century Scholar Program and get them really linked into early college right off the bat? What I've referred to as growing the program down, meaning getting it into the middle school and into even sixth grade so that you're grooming and recruiting those kids to be more purposeful in their middle school career as well as preparing them to be in, in, in high school. So our program, unlike some programs in the state, we really take all comers, all right? So if the kid is an honors kid and they want to be part of the early college program, we want that. If the kid is a first-time, you know, college family, then we want them as well, especially if they haven't necessarily had the opportunity to be groomed to be that honors student, if you will. But we have literally doubled the number of honors classes as a result of taking kids that wouldn't normally have chosen that path and groomed them to do it. I'd like to see us double it again to where we got to the point where, yes, we are looking at 21st Century Scholars and giving them the proper supports to grow them into being strong candidates to really make use of that money from the state to get free college, basically. So we're doing that. Now, one of the things that we've always talked about is the number of classes we can offer. And in order to be able to do that, we have to meet the Higher Learning Commission requirements for being basically an adjunct professor. That means you have to have a master's degree in the subject that you're teaching, or you have to have a master's degree in something, but 18 hours of graduate credit in that thing that you're teaching. All right, so the slip that some of you have in front of you is we have something in the range of 66 dual credit and AP courses. And that's quite an offering for a school our size. In fact, I would suspect that there are few schools, if any schools, in St. Joe County, including Big Old Penn, that's going to have more than we do. And if they do, it's only a little bit more. So in any event, we try to give all of our kids the opportunities they can to explore the things in their elective credits to also meet all the core requirements so that when they leave here, they're going to leave hopefully with at least a year of college credit that's going to be transferable and allow them to be able to move on more quickly. And like the one example discussed earlier, the, the kid is going to be able to get probably part of his grad degree paid for as well. So those are all good things. I think it's a strong program. And I think once we can concentrate more on how we're going to socially distance and run classes in a hybrid model to actually continue to grow this program and have kids benefit from that and have families benefit from it because they're going to have kids succeeding at what they wanted to do, going to college and getting through it faster and less expensive. Last slide is merely, do you have any questions?
This is tremendous. It really is tremendous.
All right, so you know where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Item 6.02, Partnership with Habitat for Humanity for St. Joseph County and School City of Mishawaka. Ms. Sauer.
Good evening, Board. I want to tell you about Fred Barone. He's in the middle of this picture with his building trades students, and he is an incredible guy. He became the instructor of the Mishawaka Building Trades in 2008 and immediately became a leader and earned the respect of his peers and his students. He's a real hero and one who is largely responsible for keeping the Mishawaka Building Trades working during the coronavirus pandemic, including this new partnership with Habitat for Humanity. In March, the coronavirus forced Mishawaka High School students off the job site before the house was finished. Tom Demester, president of the Board of the Building Trades, told me that Fred would have finished the house on his own, and it was a high-end house, but it was because of former students who loved him, who came back, who took time off their jobs and worked around their college classes to help him put the house together. The house was finished just a couple of months late after schedule, and it sold in one day. That was the 40th home that the Mishawaka Building Trades have built in the Mishawaka School District. With the uncertainty of opening schools this year, the Board was concerned about building a new house. What would happen if we went back to school and we had to leave? And how could Fred finish the house then? What would we do? Fred thought of Habitat for Humanity, and he gave them a call. And Parker Norris with the Mishawaka Network was there at the media event just a couple of weeks ago when the partnership was announced. We'll roll the video.
Thanks to Habitat for Humanity, the Mishawaka community is going to continue to grow. And by the time it's all said and done, there'll be 80 families living in this Fields at Highlands subdivision. What's even more exciting is we believe by the time it's all done, there will be 100 children attending Mishawaka schools. As volunteer groups have dwindled due to COVID-19, students from the Mishawaka High School Building Trades Program are stepping in to help build these houses while getting more than just a hands-on education.
My concern was that we needed to, in order to get credit for the kids, we had to work hands-on and that I needed to follow curriculum that involved actually building something. We are going to be a little bit different where we used to build a, a house from start to finish, and we'd touch on every aspect of the house. We're hoping that we'll be jumping around here from house to house and helping out as much as we can. Learning how to, the, when holding a saw, pulling the trigger for the first time, the power, the fear of a blade turning, you know, you can't experience that virtually.
And this opportunity to do onsite education excites students like senior Seamus Harlan.
I was extremely excited because I knew that last year, I wanted to pick up exactly where I left off. And that's kind of what we're doing here because we have, obviously, the garage we're building and then some of these other houses. If it rains, we're going into the basement here and we're going to fix it. If it, if we finish the garage, we're going to a different house and we're going to start siding it. We're going to start roofing a certain house.
For both the Mishawaka High School Building Trades Program and Habitat for Humanity, this is an opportunity to connect students and families with their community.
Just like every home we build, I'm hoping they take pride in it, come back, show their kids possibly in years to come that I built that. I helped build that house there. And it's helping build the community.
A sense of community is so important. It's more than just building a house. It's more than just building a subdivision. This is a, a community. This is a neighborhood that people really enjoy living in, and we're excited about this partnership. Parker Norris, Mishawaka Network.
It was, it was just a great day being out there. And if you get a chance, just go out and to the site. It's wonderful. And I just want to mention, too, that this is the first and only high school building trades program that Habitat has ever worked with. There are 15 students out there in the class, working every day, and they have been in person since August 17th. So that's a pretty cool thing. And appreciate your time and letting me talk about Fred. And I hope he's watching. He's supposed to be watching virtually. So, thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Ms. Sauer. This is certainly a creative solution to what could have been just a devastating blow to the program. Item 6.03, July Financial Statements and Monthly Comparison. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, members of the Board. Bruce, if we could pull up the 731-20 attachment. No, it's, it's on the, the agenda item that you, it's the attachment. Probably that Apple device that you're using. It's right here, Bruce. It's just this right here. So we're going to start on the, the first fund as the Education Fund. And as usual, if the Board has any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. July is a fairly uneventful month, so, you know, we're going to go relatively quickly through these unless, unless the Board has questions. Before the month of July, revenue essentially right on track with where we had been. Salaries, benefits, again, real close, right on track with where we had been. Salaries jump ahead a little bit in July because some teachers elect contract payoffs, which, again, that'll catch its, catch itself back up in August. But ultimately, revenue and expenditures right in that 57% range. That's right where we would expect to be near the end of July. July was a three-pay month, so you're going to see some decreased cash balances in these funds that, that hold a lot of payroll. But we ended the month of July in the Education Fund with $3.9 million. And again, no major surprises in this fund at this time. Bruce, if you could scroll down to the next sheet on this document, the Referendum Operating Fund. Again, revenue, pretty much where we would expect it to be. Salaries and benefits are a little bit ahead, are a little bit higher at the end of July than I had budgeted them. That's due mainly to bringing our tech assistants in over the summer for a number of hours that was greater than what I had budgeted. But again, nothing too spectacular there. Year-to-date expenditures right, right down there at 48%. Again, a large chunk of those expenditures is the transfer which is made at year-end. So no real surprises in the Referendum Operating Fund. And we ended the month of July with $1.2 million in that fund. However, keep in mind, we took out a temporary loan for $550,000, so that's reflected in that balance. We're going to skip the debt service funds. Bruce, you can skip the next two funds and go to the operations fund. I'm sorry. You're still on that same document? Yeah, so just keep scrolling down. Keep going, please. And one more. Thank you, sir. Operations Fund, again, revenue. We talked about property taxes in, when we talked about the month of June. We did take advantage of protected taxes, which did put a little bit more money in that local property tax line. Due to COVID and the delay in the deadline for paying property taxes, we did have something unusual this, this year, which was a partial distribution of property taxes in July. Again, that was due to the fact that some taxpayers didn't have to pay till, for a later date, so the monies weren't there during the June distribution, but the county didn't want us to be out those dollars all the way until December. So we did receive some property taxes in July, and you'll see that in all of our taxable funds. I just wanted to point that out. Salaries and benefits, at 61%. Again, right in, right in the range we would expect this fund to be at the end of July. Overall total expenditures, down around, under 54%. And again, that has to do with some dollars that we saved last spring when we, when we broke due to COVID-19, and we saved on some supplies and some utilities. So expenditures are a little bit less than what we had budgeted. But year-to-date fund balance is over $3 million, which means that through June, we've actually added to the operations fund balance. And keep in mind, we're actually transferring money from the Education Fund into the operations fund. So we're going to analyze the operations fund pretty closely when we get into October, November, and December because if we can lower the amount that we're transferring from the general fund for calendar year 2020, we may be able to get under the threshold for excessive transfers. Because again, if you're transferring more than 15% of your education fund, tuition support into your operations fund, you can get put on the naughty list, which is the excessive transfer list. So again, if we can figure out a way for at least one more year to not be there, we're going to try to do it. But again, happy with where the operations fund is at at the end of July. And then the next fund, Bruce, would be the School Lunch Fund. Not a ton of activity in terms of expenditures in the month of July. We do do summer feeding. But again, we added to our cash balance during the month of July through the summer feeding program. Again, cash balance is up over $818,000, which is great. And so we're happy with the School Lunch Fund. The next fund is the Curricular Materials Fund. Almost no activity in the month of July. We're still hovering there around $460,000 cash balance, similar to June. And then the last fund is the Self-Insurance Fund. Again, three-pay months are bad for your operations and your education, but then you should see more revenue in your self-insurance fund because basically you're paying from your education and your operations fund into your self-insurance fund every time that you run payroll. So we did add to our cash balance in the self-insurance fund just over $35,000. Our claims ran hot in July as they did in June. And again, I think that that's due to certain things catching back up as people were unable to see their doctor or do certain procedures during the months of March, April, and May. So not, not terribly surprised to see that June and July claims were a little bit higher. But again, year-to, year-to-date fund balance over $300,000. That's certainly an improvement over where we've been, and we'll hopefully see that continue to increase. Bruce, if you can go back to the Board Docs tab and then click on the Monthly Comparison, July 2020, just really quickly, getting this document, if you slide down to the next sheet, and we've got July highlighted here. Again, July being a three-pay month, but as you compare July month-end to previous years, you can see we're still almost $1 million higher than we were last year. Last year, the three-pay month would have been August. So again, we're continuing that trend of adding, adding to our cash balances over time in preparation for 2021 and beyond when we have the circuit breaker, but no protected taxes to help out in that regard. So again, happy to answer any questions the Board may have, but those are the financials for the month of July.
Are there any questions, Mr. Newman? If not, thank you very much. Takes us to our Human Resources section of the agenda. 7.01, Personnel Report. Mr. Calderon.
Mr. Calderon could not be with us tonight, so I will recommend in his absence that the Personnel Report dated September 9th, 2020 be approved as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the report as submitted. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item 8.01, Virtual Learning Update and Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. Ms. Hickel, Ms. Stoksl, and Mr. Modlin. Ms. Hickel, Ms. Stoksl, and Mr. Modlin.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Greg.
President Curry, members of the board. As you probably recall, last month, we shared with you our live virtual learning model. And at that time, we tried to clarify why we felt this model was not only best for our student learners, but also for supporting families. I promise you tonight, I won't share any weird personal stories or analogies, but rather talk about our celebrations and our successes. When we designed our virtual learning plan, we knew that if we connected our students to our teachers in a live setting, we could provide the best opportunity for success in instruction, curriculum, attendance, and engagement. We felt strongly that we could minimize the challenges of virtual learning and maximize the learning by giving our teachers the closest approximation as possible to their normal routines and structures, giving them the best chance to do what they do best to teach, even if it looked a little bit differently. We are excited to be able to share some great results and updates from our virtual learning since we shared the design with you over a month ago. We want to celebrate on how we have focused on connecting, supporting, and growing during this time. There are some brief stats on the screen that I think help to tell this story. You can see in terms of connecting, that over 18,000 Google Meet sessions have been held to support our live virtual learning. You can consider those like class sessions. Over 155,000 student logins during this time, as well as over 12,000 teacher logins to Clever, which is where we house all of our educational technology. In terms of supporting, over 1,415 answered technology helpline calls. The technology department has been working hard to support students and families. And over 410 support tickets closed, meaning successfully resolved or were able to support teachers. In terms of growing, over 100,000 Canvas student assignments have been created, so our students are working hard. Over 4,000 teacher sessions and SCM's professional learning courses. Our teachers have been working hard. These numbers are certainly powerful, and they clearly show how hard everyone is working. But we also want to highlight how well they are working. At this time, Mr. Matt Modlin is going to highlight the great work of the technology department as a critical element of virtual learning.
Thank you. In supporting virtual learning, the technology department distributed 4,000 devices at John Young Middle School to all of our K-12 families. So we had a, I think, a great turnaround time when parents joined or entered the line to when they received the device. We also found that our John Young teacher Chromebooks were not able to keep up with their Google Meets the way that we needed them to, so we are refreshing those a little bit early. You'll see an agenda item on the board agenda tonight. We have been supporting families by calling that tech hotline and connecting them to a tech assistant in that building. Teachers can get immediate help from their tech assistant in the building, or by putting in a help desk ticket. And we are growing by purchasing a Chromebook management software called Blocksi, and it has been piloted with some teachers. We do have some crossover between some other softwares that we're going to try to bring all of those and unify them into one software package to make things easier. There is an image at the bottom left of the screen here that gives a teacher dashboard overview, so that teacher can actually see every student's screen and see what the students are saying, so they can best support them in their education. They can also help to redirect that student back on task. We are also going to have a one-to-one take-home policy, so when we're back in session and have our students back in schools, all the K-12 students will charge their computers at home and bring them with, with them to school each day.
Now we are going to shift to what teaching and learning looked like during virtual learning. As we started to launch virtual learning, we knew that collaboration was going to be critical. So we wanted to ensure that we set up schedules that allowed our staff to connect and collaborate frequently and daily. Working with our school leaders, we were able to create a standard elementary schedule, so that means all our elementaries had the exact same blocks of time. This allowed for meaningful collaboration within schools, but also across schools. We also worked with our school leaders at John Young and Mishawaka High School to have time blocks that allowed for team, department, and grade level collaboration. Staff worked together during these times to ensure virtual learning was successful. In addition to this frequent collaboration and connection time, we also scheduled debrief sessions and intentional opportunities for our staff to reflect. We found, as we piloted this during summer school, that these debriefs were so important, that it was a time for staff to share what is working well, but then also to problem solve together. So an example would be a second-grade teacher may share that this went really well today, but then they had difficulty during this time. Instead of that teacher problem solving alone, these debrief sessions allowed for another teacher to step in and maybe share a solution or something that's worked in their classroom. These were led by our school leaders and really supported our virtual learning. We also had weekly school leader and principal debrief sessions. They met with our administration team here at the Ad Center virtually, and we debriefed how the week went, and we also collectively problem solved for the next week. So we looked at trends of what happened during the week, looking at our helpline calls, talking to our teachers and families. And then as a group of school leaders and district leaders, we problem solved together to ensure that we were successful moving forward. With the consistent schedule, it also allowed opportunity for cross-building collaboration, so we had groups like exceptional learners, intervention teachers, that worked together to debrief how virtual learning was going and to share strategies to improve their instruction for our students. These frequent debriefs were very helpful, but I, I think many people can attest, when you need help, sometimes it's good to just talk to a person in real time right away. So through the curriculum and instruction department, and I say that, but it was mostly our curriculum integration specialist, Wade Books, we offered a phone line where our teachers could call and get that just-in-time support, in addition to an email that they could reach out to us. And as Matt Modlin has already shared, the technology assistants also provided that just-in-time help when teachers requested. As we launched virtual learning, we started with a onboarding professional learning session, but we knew that would not be enough. So we had targeted professional learning facilitated by the curriculum and instruction department and by our teacher leaders, the partners in tech. We would get requests from teachers or identify needs, and then we'd ensure that we matched the request to a professional learning to support teachers and staff every step of the way. We also looked strategically for opportunities to embed professional learning. So an example you'll see on the screen is from what we call a weekly video blog or a blog that we would send out from the curriculum and instruction department, created by Wade Books, and it would provide targeted embedded professional learning. In this example, what you see is all the buildings have a teacher that shared one practice that has been successful. So our teachers could learn from each other and then take a teaching practice and applied in the classroom the next day. As we started to launch and plan virtual learning this summer, Governor Holcomb announced a competitive grant to address equity issues in internet connectivity, technology, and instruction under the United States Department of Education. We are pleased to announce today that we were awarded this competitive grant in the amount of $191,500 by the United States Department of Education under the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. This is to help target internet connectivity deserts in our Mishawaka community that negatively impact children who are learning remotely and virtually. We also want to emphasize that this was a collaborative effort between our Mishawaka City, schools, and parks. Our purpose is to target internet connectivity deserts. So basically, we're looking at our city, and we are noting where there is need for internet connectivity, and we are working together collaboratively to address those needs, using a two-pronged approach. First, we are going to expand our free public Wi-Fi in our Mishawaka parks. This will not only provide immediate Wi-Fi, but it will be sustainable beyond just the implementation years of this grant. In addition, we will be providing Comcast Internet Essentials for families in Mishawaka schools that are in need for the academic year to support them in virtual learning. We have a rich history of collaboration with the city and the parks, and through this continued partnership, that will provide extended learning opportunities for students, improve family experience, and provide community sustainability. We look forward to hosting a joint press conference with the city next week to share this great story and details with the community.
Finally, in conclusion, some may see the Mishawaka Way as a logo or an opportunity for branding, and it certainly does that. But we truly believe that it guides our work and exemplifies the things we're most proud of in school city Mishawaka. Virtual learning is no exception to this. As we've watched our staff, our students, and our families come together to make virtual learning successful, there are countless examples of growth mindset, collaboration, communication, creativity, innovation, et cetera. I could list all 10. And President Curry, I think you said it best, there will be barriers, and there have been barriers, but it's how we've overcome those barriers and our resiliency that best exemplifies the Mishawaka Way. We wanted to close by sharing the feedback that we've received from some of those who are living it every day, our students, our parents, and our staff. We think you will see these tenets of the Mishawaka Way and what they had to say and what they shared as well. From a student, "I thought it would be a bunch of boring e-learning. Getting to see my teachers and friends every day is the best. I didn't know my teachers could teach like that. It's a lot like real school, and I know they're working really hard for all of us." And they certainly are. Oftentimes, when you get a voicemail or an email, it tends to be a complaint, but occasionally we have those rare gems where someone has taken the time out of their very busy day to reach out just to thank us. One of the most powerful ones we received was a voicemail from a parent on the very first day of school, who was so overcome with appreciation and joy at how that first day had went, the relief she experienced, that she began crying in her thank-you message. And I'll self-admit, it made some of us cry too. Another parent perspective that was shared recently on social media praising SCM publicly. This parent said, "I have five e-learners from three school systems in five different schools. Two of my children have a great setup. The teachers are on with them, directing them, teaching them, interacting with them throughout the day. They are learning from their teacher, enjoying their day, keeping busy, doing work with their teacher, holding up their work to the screen so the teacher can check it, correct them if they get it wrong, praise them when they do well, and it's almost like being in class. I'm very impressed. I can state as a fact, Mishawaka schools have it going on." And finally, from an SCM teacher, "I have been a part of SCM my whole life, student, parent, teacher, and I have never been more proud of our district. The teamwork, the dedication, and the grace shown by all is incredible." Maybe you'll see the last slide, maybe you won't. "As we look ahead to bringing our students back into our buildings and moving into Phase Two of reopening, some may be looking far past virtual learning, but we know that the connections, the support, and the growth we've experienced and witnessed during this time will have extensive impact positively on our future learning for years to come in SCM, regardless if students are learning virtually or in person." Thank you.
And thank you. Are there any questions? It's an impressive present, it's impressive results. You know, you've put in an immense amount of hard work, and it's, it shows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.02, Purchase of John Young Middle School Replacement Devices. Mr. Modlin?
Good evening. After receiving several help desk tickets from John Young Middle School teachers about video conference disconnects, the technology department investigated wireless connectivity and device utilization to determine a root cause. It was determined that the wireless infrastructure was not the cause of the disconnects, and the existing teacher Chromebook devices in place were found to have insufficient processor capabilities and are approaching their replacement cycle in the spring. All other district devices were evaluated and found to be sufficient. To continue to support online instruction, replacements are needed a few months early. Reimbursement for these devices are submitted as part of the school corporation's FEMA grant request by Alex Newman. If that request is not approved, they will be paid for using CARES Grant funds. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of 70 replacement Chromebooks for John Young Middle School teachers at a cost of $39,545.50.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item 8.03, Copy of Purchase of Blocksi Internet Filtering. Mr. Modlin?
So as referenced in our previous presentation there, Blocksi is a filtering and classroom Chromebook management system, which allows for teachers to monitor Chromebook screens during school hours. Teachers will also have the ability to manage the websites students are able to access during their class periods. Artificial intelligence tools also allow school principals to be notified of harmful behavior in student Gmail, Google Docs, Drive, YouTube, and also based upon browsing patterns. If approved, Blocksi will be funded with proceeds from the referendum operating fund. It is recommended that...
All right, I think we have a motion. You're recommending we approve this, correct?
That is correct.
Holly, you made the motion?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Amanda. Are there any questions for Mr. Modlin or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Modlin.
Thank you.
Takes us into business and operations section of the agenda and our amended item, 9.8. I can't find my copy of the amendment here. Thank you, Bill. This is a recommendation that we, all right. Mr. Barker, Recommendation to Approve Contention Fee Contract.
Yes, I believe Spence Walton is with us tonight, and he brought this opportunity to us. Is he here still? And he intends to present that information to you, so why don't we, why don't we move on to the next item and then back up if we could? Would that require us to amend?
Sure.
I believe he's here waiting, so let's just, let's move forward and then...
We'll just cycle back to that. We'll move on for the moment to item 9.01, Update on the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum. Ms. Fai?
Yes, it was, Lisa Gartia intended to be here tonight and could not be here, so we appreciate Jan Fai coming in and making this presentation on her behalf.
Thank you. Good evening, President Curry, board members, and Superintendent Barker. As, as Mr. Barker said, Lisa was not able to join us tonight. She's a little under the weather, so she paid me handsomely to come and join you, and I'll collect from her later. I'd like to read the statement that she had prepared for you. I'm very, very excited to, to share this with you and hope that you, in fact, share the excitement when you hear it. "The goal for the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum Advisory Board has always been to find the best option to preserve and display the museum's collection. I'd like to share a partial list of the organizations that we reached out to, so you have a sense of who helped to inform our decisions. Mishawaka Historical Museum, City of Mishawaka, Mishawaka Parks Department, Beaker Mansion, Mishawaka Penn Harris Public Library, St. Joe Regional Medical Center, Berkshire Hathaway Realty, Pocagin Band, Goodwill, Gears, South Bend Cubs, Visit South Bend, Mishawaka, Ivy Tech, IU South Bend, Notre Dame, St. Joe County, the History Museum, the Sudabaker Museum, Gibson Insurance, Ethos, Indiana Historical Society, Curious Kids Museum, excuse me, Curious Kids Museum, and Connor Prairie. Everyone, including the many others that we spoke with, offered suggestions and assistance on reaching our goal. We have focused on two options, the first being relocating and opening a self-sustaining museum. Unfortunately, we have been unable to discover an entity or entities that could provide the significant financial support needed for such an endeavor. In the interest of leaving no stone unturned, the museum had a pledge drive in the end of May, at the end of May. Letters were sent to former members and business... Letters were sent to former members and business partners to gauge the amount of community financial support that could be expected from those who knew the museum best and had supported it in the past. Despite a robust response and some very generous pledges, the museum does not have or can expect to have the financial resources to maintain even a very modest self-sustaining location. The second option was to co-locate with an existing organization in some type of collaboration. From the beginning of this process, the museum has received a tremendous amount of information and support from the History Museum. I am sure they are watching on live stream right now. The question of an in-house collaboration, however, had never been asked. To our great delight, the Board of the Northern Indiana Historical Society, which owns and oversees the History Museum, has agreed to begin conversations on this option. To be part of a large, successful museum that is a regional destination with thousands of visitors every year and operated by a full staff of creative professionals and enthusiastic volunteers is a dream come true. For their part, the History Museum sees the value of the Hannah Lindell collection and is excited by how it could enhance their exhibits and programming, especially in their kids' first area. This would greatly expand our collection's educational impact. After analyzing all the options, the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum Advisory Board enthusiastically supports this collaboration with the History Museum as the best possible outcome for our collection. Seventy-four years ago, a small group consisting of community members and School City of Mishawaka personnel started the process of creating a children's museum, and that torch has passed through many hands. Now, the essence of Hannah Lindell Children's Museum, the collection, has the opportunity to be a part of the History Museum, awarded accreditation by the American Alliance of Museums for its demonstration of the highest professional standards for education, public service, and collection stewardship, and its commitment to continued institutional improvement. Accreditation places the History Museum at the very top of the continuum of excellence and among a group of fewer than 5% of American museums so honored. To put it in sports terms, Hannah Lindell Children's Museum has been called to the big leagues. So where do we go from here? We would like to begin preliminary discussions to convert this proposal into a reality. We would then come back to the school board, hopefully in the very near future, with a detailed plan that meets the needs of both museums and the community. This concludes Lisa's comments. I would like to add that I can't imagine anything more exciting than this to bring to the school board and to our community. This is an exciting collaboration. Our goal, as Lisa said, was to, to make sure the collection was available, was used for education, and was seen in perpetuity, and this gives us a chance to do this, so I hope you will agree.
So is there a recommendation that we approve the proposal to continue a possible relationship, relocation of the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum as presented in collaboration with the History Museum?
We are making that recommendation tonight. I, I appreciate Jan and Lisa and all their work to get us to this place. You know, they've, they've been tasked with this, and I share in their excitement, and I make that recommendation that the board approve the proposal to continue this possible relationship for relocation of the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum as presented.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, the History Museum's a pretty cool place, so I think this is really exciting. This will be a really good use of the Hannah Lindell Collection.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm familiar with the History, it's an excellent organization, well-run, gets better every year. This is a perfect way to preserve the collection and increase, you know, community, its exposure to the community. I, I can't think of a better solution for the Children's Museum. Thank you for the work that you've put into this, Ms. Fai, to, to bring our, our collection to this point. Any other discussion or questions? If not, we have a motion to approve, and it's been seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We look forward to hearing what you bring back on this. Item, now we'll circle back to item 9.8, recommendation to approve contention fee contract with Kaufman Law Firm and Michael Topes Limited. Mr. Barker?
Yes, Mr. Spence Walton is with us tonight to discuss an opportunity for School City of Mishawaka to join a class action lawsuit pertaining to the opioid crisis. As a result of this crisis, schools have incurred additional expenses while also receiving fewer state and federal dollars as funds have been diverted away from education in order to tackle the crisis. If approved, there will be no out-of-pocket costs for School City to join the class action suit, and instead, a 15% fee would be withheld should any fees or any funds ever be awarded to School City of Mishawaka. So thank you, Mr. Walton, for being with us tonight to make us aware of this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. President, Superintendent Barker, members of the board, thanks for inviting me. It seems like a night to discuss pandemics, and one of those is the opioid crisis that's been taking place in the United States for many, many years. Opioid litigation is in progress in two central locations in the United States. The first is in what's called a MDL or a multi-district litigation is the term for it. The term means you're collecting a class of plaintiffs who have similar claims, who have similar damages, and you bring the class together against a group of defendants, and then you present your case. There'll be a sample group of people that put forward their case for consideration to a jury or a judge. You have to be a member of the class in order to be able to recover anything in any of these class actions. The first one is in bankruptcy court in the Southern District of New York, and that is as a result of the Purdue Pharma Pharmaceutical Company. And the main focus of all this opioid litigation is going against, it's focused against the manufacturers of the opioids. There's been much published about it. I'm not going to go into much of it. I'll give you a couple of examples that will give you an idea how grossly negligent some of these pharmaceutical companies have been and how it's impacted many communities. But the Purdue Pharma one is, again, it was in bankruptcy. It was put there because the wealthy family that owns Purdue Pharma wanted to protect their family name. They put it in a bankruptcy. We can't get into that class now, but that's only one manufacturer among many. The second MDL or multi-district litigation is in Cleveland, Ohio, and that is now naming different pharmaceutical companies who are not in bankruptcy as defendants in that class action. And the, the MDL there is focusing on cities and towns and also through the group in Texas that contacted me through other lawyers to try to involve School City, want to present potential damage models to the litigation as a member of the class, to show the damage that has, that has been and can be proven, that what, what this has done as a crisis to our communities, and I'll give you a few examples in a second. And so each, the, the important thing to remember is despite the fact that Purdue Pharma's in bankruptcy, that doesn't mean they don't have money. They have a lot of money. But they're there because they know that this litigation is going to generate a lot of damages and et cetera. But the other thing that's important to note is the pharmaceutical companies themselves are jointly and severally liable. So just because Purdue Pharma may not have enough money to contribute to a class settlement or trial, doesn't mean that the other pharmaceutical companies won't put together enough money to, to either settle it or be required to, to pay it out as a result of litigation. What has happened is, has been reported by many, but the bottom line is the drug industry has turned a blind eye to the amounts being distributed to pharmacies, doctors, clinics, and communities all across this country for many years. The companies knew they were distributing drugs to communities they knew could actually kill the user and far more than the community ever needed. They actually, when they first manufactured the opioids, had claimed that they were non-addictive. They were also originally created for the class of people who suffered chronic pain, illness, cancer patients, things of that. They weren't created for people with low back pain, arthritis, all the other problems that people have that experience types of pain. And so the drug companies took it upon themselves to push sales with their marketing forces. They pushed sales in the areas they knew couldn't possibly, couldn't possibly make any sense other than the fact that these drugs were being overused in these areas. They, they focused on poorer areas of the country, Western Kentucky, Tennessee, West Virginia, and I'll give you a couple of examples that will, actually, when you hear it, it's, it's, it's really, it's really bizarre what has happened. The, obviously, the black market got flooded for opioids for people seeking pain relief, and the drug companies took it upon themselves to even educate their salespeople and their sales forces to go into these areas and actually flood these markets with the drugs. As an example, a small town of 5,000 people had enough opioids distributed to legally serve each person in the town for the next 50 years. Fifty years. Another example that's cited in the investigations, and they go on and on, I could, I can't even tell you how many, but there was a 25, 25,000-person county in West Virginia that received 12 million pills in three years, in one county. 12 million pills in three years. There was then lobbying efforts. It's, it's very fascinating if anybody out there wants to read more about it or hear about some of the investigations. You can go online, you can Google it, you can listen to 60-minute programs about what they had done to lobby Congress to blame some of these things on the Drug Enforcement Agency and lessen their powers. They spent $110 million there lobbying Congress. Long and short of it is, sooner or later, all of this started to come out into the public. And I'll give you some examples as to how this impacts communities. There's many listed, but I'll just read you a few. Losses caused by the decrease in funding available for public services for which funding was lost because it was diverted to other public services designed to address the opioid epidemic. Costs for providing health care, medical care, additional therapeutic and prescription drug purchases, and other treatments for patients suffering from opioid-related addiction or disease, including overdoses and deaths. Costs of training emergency and first responders in the proper treatment of drug overdoses. Costs associated with providing police officers, firefighters, emergency first responders with naloxone and opioid antagonists to use to block, block the deadly effects of opioid overdoses. Costs for providing mental health services, treatment, counseling, rehabilitation services, and social services to victims of the national opioid epidemic and their families. Costs for providing treatment of infants born with opioid-related medical conditions or born addicted to opioids due to drug use by their mother during pregnancy. Costs associated with providing care for children whose parents suffer from opioid-related disability or incapacitation. The loss of tax revenue, which I know is dear, near and dear to school corporations' funding. The loss of tax revenue due to decreased efficiency in the size of the working population in the community. Losses caused by diminished property values in neighborhoods where the opioid epidemic has taken root, and losses caused by diminished property values in the form of decreased business investment and tax revenue. I'm not here to preach about all of this except for to say, there is an opportunity for School City to enter this class in the MDL. By doing this, you have to join the class. If you don't join the class, if there's any recovery, any funds that are paid out will not come to School City. It will be virtually at no risk. There's a 15% contingency fee agreement that is divided between the 15% of the fees only go on what's collected for School City. You're not even required to advance any expenses nor repay any expenses that may be incurred as a result of litigation. So there's really no risk. There's very minimal involvement of any of the administrators. I doubt any of you'd be asked to take a deposition or a testimony or even set foot in a courtroom. There will be claim forms that have to be filed and all the different pieces of litigation, and that's what, the lawyers will be there to help you. In order to do it, you have to institute a complaint, a sample complaint that was provided me with the lawyers out of Texas is 134 pages in length. It's very, very complicated. Nobody said it was going to be easy. But there are two law firms in Texas, one in Beaumont, Texas, and one in Houston, that are highly skilled in class actions. Three local firms, one in Bloomington, our firm in Mishawaka, and the Jonas firm in South Bend. The Jonas firm, I think, has been speaking to South Bend Community School System to get into the litigation as well. But those are the five firms that would be involved if there's any recovery. I have a copy of the contingency fee agreement with me. I don't know if, Mr. President, if you have it, but may I approach?
Sure.
I, I brought three copies of what was provided to me, so that it can, and being a lawyer, I know I understand. But anyway, it seems to me, and from the discussions I've had with all the lawyers, that this is really, would be, to me, be a no-brainer for School City. It's also taken an aggressive approach against these pharmaceutical companies. It's taken the stand against this type of behavior, and I really think that the, the community at large would understand and also appreciate the fact that you might want to take a stand in this case. The model that was prepared for the demographics of Mishawaka and the population of School City, the students, number of students in, in our schools, has projected a model of damages near $19 million. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to get $19 million, but if you do, you'll net $16 million by being in this class. So to me, I, I believe it's a worthy cause. I believe it's something that really stands up for our community and stands up for our students. And if you can, if you understand what I was saying about the type of damage that's been caused to the public for this, I think it's something that our community would widely support. And so that, I'd be glad to answer questions, but that is what we're here for today. All you'd have to do would be to execute the contingency fee contract, and then once we do that, we would have to prepare the complaint, which will be modeled towards the other complaints. As I understand it, it would get filed. I even, I'm getting mixed signals now to Texas already, but it's going to be filed somewhere, and we will be a member of this class. The, the, I don't want to get into too deep of what's going on in Cleveland, but we have a very aggressive judge there who wants to get the case settled. He has designated a class of municipalities to represent the entire class because obviously some of the things I read to you involve municipalities generally, but certainly always will also impact school corporations on some of the other areas of damage that I've outlined. And I've been assured that they will do their work and that it will be of little or no time or effort on your part, whatever it is, we will help you do it. And that's, that's why I'm here, and I appreciate you asking me to come. It's an opportunity, and I just didn't want you to pass it up.
We appreciate you bringing this opportunity to us, Mr. Walton. I support our participation in it and, and recommend that the Board of School Trustees approve the contingent fee agreement with Kaufman Law Firm and Mitchell A. Topes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, entering into the contingency fee agreement. Is there any discussion on the motion or questions?
I would say, Mr. Curry, that if there's any changes that you want to that document, I can certainly, we'll, we'll take care of that for you, but I've read it three times and it's pretty thorough.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty...
My, my normal contingency fee is usually two, so...
Right. And it does very clearly state that the, the client understands and agrees that no attorney fees, litigation expenses, or court costs to be due or owing to counsel and/or associated co-counsel by client in the event there's no recovery. So there's no, there's no risk. We're not putting anything into it.
Unlike COVID, you're not going to be out a million dollars this year.
All right. All right. All right. Right, but it's been, thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contingency fee agreement. Is any additional questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for bringing this opportunity to us. That takes us to item 9.02, Recommendation to Approve Agreement with Elkhart Area Career Center. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry and members of the board. Before I turn the item over for action, I just wanted to address Mr. Strawn's questions. The current estimated number of SEM students attending Elkhart Career Center, I haven't actually gotten the bill yet, but I assume Mr. Ross could give us an estimated number.
About 40. So, we're down about 10 from last year.
A second question has to do with the Advisory Board. I'm not sure on that one. John, do you know, do we have any representation?
A lot of the schools that are sending students to the person, whether they're in county or not, have an administrator. In my case, I usually will go and represent us. Plus, we all have local advisory boards that feed into the Elkhart Advisory Board. So, I think there's reasonable representation.
Thank you, John. Does SEM have meaningful accounting insight into the total operating costs of the Career Center program and what has been the total operating cost trend over the last five years? So, when they bill us, they send us an estimated billing at the beginning of the year, actually usually get it in tail end of September. And then, towards the end of the year, we get a final bill, and that final bill will outline their total costs. And there is some itemization of those total costs in that final bill. The total costs, and again, I'm kind of going off memory here, Mr. Strawn, so I can provide you some, some information later in a report, but their total costs generally have increased slightly. But it kind of ebbs and flows in terms of what we pay in a year, depending on how many students are attending, or what we pay per student, because depending on how many students they have to bring down the total costs, all the, all the schools can benefit. So, I would say that we do have insight into the operating costs, exactly how far down into that rabbit hole we go to double-check things, you know, that might be a different story. But we do look at that billing every year, and I do have some reporting that can compare at least the last five school years, and I'd be happy to provide that. So, that being said, this agreement between School City of Mishawaka and the Elkhart Area Career Center is renewed annually by the Board of School Trustees. It enables our students at Mishawaka High School to attend the Career Center on a full or partial day basis, and this current agreement runs through June 30 of 2021. And it's our recommendation that we approve this agreement with Elkhart Area Career Center for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you.
This takes us to item 9.03, Approval of an Agreement for Professional Services with Chris Curry. Mrs. Michalos, if you could, is going to present this, but before she does, Chris, I need to disclose, Chris Curry is my wife, and because of that, I have filed a conflict statement with Mr. Barker in order to act on this motion. We must first have action by the board to accept the conflict statement, and I will not, I will be recusing myself from that vote and also the, the vote on the contract itself. So, is there a motion to accept my conflict?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that in that case? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so four approvals and one abstention. That would be my abstention. Then moves on to Ms. Michalos, would you like to present the item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Curry, Mr. Barker, President, President Curry, Mr. Barker, and members of the board. This is an annual contract from exceptional learners to secure the services of Chris Curry, who's a retired South Bend Community School Corporation School Psychologist, and has been working with us for a number of years. We have a current staff of three full-time school psychologists. We do end up in times of the year where we have a bottleneck, an excessive number of evaluations that need to be completed prior to our December 1 Annual Fiscal Count Day. First steps, we evaluate all young little kids suspected of having a disability turning three, so all those evaluations need to be completed prior to their third birthday. And unfortunately, we can't control when children are born. So, it looks like there are parts of the year where it's kind of a slow time, then it picks up. So, we feel that we need additional services to help support our school psychologists. I just quickly did an eyeball of our testing logs, and, for instance, last year, one of our school psychologists completed 46 full evaluations of students with disabilities. That doesn't include reevaluations, working with teams at the school building, offering support to teachers and students. And then, currently, that same school psychologist right now has 19 open cases on their log. So, a definite need for an additional person when needed. We don't feel the need for an additional full-time employee, but certainly the support that we could use from a contracted employee is very beneficial. So, it's recommended to the School Board of Trustees that we approve the agreement for professional services with Chris Curry as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion or additional questions from Ms. Michalos? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. So, motion carries by a majority of the board. Thank you. Which takes us to item 9.04, Approval of Agreement for Professional Services with Caroline Brill. Again, Ms. Michalos.
This is the first contract proposed for a teacher of the students who are blind, low vision. Eileen Coleman, who retired this summer, had been our blind, low-vision teacher, and by law, we have to have a teacher of record to provide those services and to meet the letter of the special education, both federal and state law. Currently, we have three students who are considered blind, low vision across the whole corporation, so you can see there is no need to hire a full-time teacher of the blind, low vision. That teacher would provide services and supports to the student, to the family, and to the teachers. So, Caroline Brill is actually a friend of ours who worked for Joint Services for many years and was the preschool director at Growing Together Preschool at Beager. And so, she has retired this summer, and boy, when I knew Eileen was going to retire, and I heard she was going to retire, I contacted her right off the bat to say, hey, I've got a sweet deal for you. So, she agreed over the summer to go ahead and join our team as a contracted blind, low-vision teacher. We will be paying her an hourly rate. So, during those three students, she'll need to attend their case conferences, she'll need to provide some materials, she'll need to be able, to be there for support for staff members. So, it's my recommendation that the School Board of Trustees approve an agreement for professional services with Caroline Brill as the teacher of blind, low vision as presented.
I'll move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes us to 9.05, Preliminary Review of Education Operations Referendum Operating in Debt Service 2021 Budget Review. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry and members of the board. Bruce, if we could now pull up that shiny PowerPoint. All right, 2021 Budget. It's probably going to be about a two-hour presentation, so I was hoping that, we don't have any new board members, there's not a ton of changes. So, I, I mean, I'm going to go through this a little more quickly than I have the last couple of years, but at any time, the board can stop me and ask questions. And before we even get into the, to the funds, I just wanted to share, we've known for years that the 2021 budget was going to be a rough calendar year budget. We knew that the circuit breaker was going to hit starting in 2020, and some of us knew that we were going to be able to take advantage of protected taxes to alleviate some of that hit in 2020. So, I've kind of known for about four years that 2021 was not going to look great from a budget perspective. But again, I just want to remind everybody, that's why we put money in the rainy day fund, that's why we've increased our cash balances, and so on and so forth. So, again, I just wanted to state that before we even started the presentation, because some of the numbers, when we get to the end, they don't look good. And as I've presented the last 2020 and 2019 to the board in my presentation, they didn't look good, and we came out a whole lot better in 19, and we're going to come out a whole lot better in 2020 than the way I presented it, and I assume we will in 2021 as well. But I am conservative by nature, so I underestimate revenues and I overestimate expenditures. So, let's just get going. I'm sorry. 2021 Budget Funds, we have our debt service fund. Just a reminder, the exempt debt service fund is now gone. It was gone in 2020, it's never coming back. Referendum Capital Debt Service, that is the, the $13 million that was approved through the referendum in 2016. Referendum Operating Fund, that's the annual operating levy for that referendum that was passed in 2016. We then have the Education Fund, which was formerly the General Fund, in addition to the Operating Fund, that has components of the old General Fund and includes what was the capital projects, transportation bus replacement, and historical society funds. So, starting with the debt service fund, here's a list of all the debt that the school has taken on over the years and all the debt that we'll be paying back in 2021. You can see, we've got some refunding bonds, some first mortgage bond sales that we did in 18 and 19. And then, we've got a whole slew of common school fund loans, unreimbursed textbooks. Just a reminder, we do get textbook reimbursement through the state of Indiana for all our free and reduced kiddos who are not required to pay fees. However, they always fall short of what the school corporation is, in a sense, out because those families don't pay. So, whatever that difference is, we, we can build in to our debt service fund. So, for 2021, that's actually about $115,000, down about $40,000 from what we submitted in 2020. We then have interest on temporary loans. I always plug in $150,000, just because that's the maximum they'll allow you to plug in there. They adjust for what the actual will be later on. It's usually around 60 grand or so. And then, we have some anticipated debt service, which is debt we've taken on, in this case, common school loans. However, I don't have amortization schedules for, so the way that the Gateway Program works, it goes in as anticipated until I've received the amortization schedules, and then they will approve that debt to be repaid from debt service. So, 2021 budget estimate is $5,454,518. And again, that anticipated debt was one of the common school fund loans we took on for one-to-one devices, in addition to the common school fund loan, construction loan that we did for elementary carpet. So, that's what that anticipated amount is. But that is the debt service, and that, those are the debts that we'll be repaying in 2021. Our other debt fund is the referendum debt. Again, this is outside the caps because it was passed via referendum. It's outside the caps for the life of the obligation. Again, this paid for roughly $13 million of construction projects, and the payment on this bond is $1,147,000 for 2021. So, then moving into the referendum operating fund, again, approved via referendum in 2016. This is a rate capped fund. What the taxpayers approved was .2434. Again, this fund, it's not in the slide, this fund is actually, it's, it's a rate-controlled fund, so when the assessed value increases, we actually capture more dollars in this fund. And our assessed valuation has been increasing. We increased 6.5% for budget year 20, and we're going to increase another 6.5% for budget year 2021, which is excellent. Increased assessed valuation helps keep the tax rate low for individual taxpayers, it pulls our unit tax rate down, but it also helps to alleviate some of the circuit breaker that we would otherwise experience. So, again, back to the referendum operating fund, passed via referendum, this is the technology fund. Essentially, it's, it's all technology, pays for our director, assistant director, Wade that we've heard a lot about this evening. We've got six district technology specialists, one tech assistant slash teacher at Mishawaka High School, I'm not quite sure how we're defining her right now, and one technology assistant at all elementary schools, in addition to John Young. Again, because we've seen that increase in AV, we're actually able to budget more hardware and software into this fund than in previous years. I've got $675,000 budgeted into that fund. Again, I'm budgeting quite high, and when the DLGF works our budget, they'll probably make me reduce that. But then, in addition to hardware and software, I have the rainy day, $400,000. And again, I'm, I have a total budget estimate of $2,219,100. Again, I'm just trying to get that amount high enough so I can capture the maximum levy that we can get in this fund, which I estimate, based on the AV, is really around $2,175,000. But it's great news. I would still propose that we try to offset hardware and software purchases into common school loans so they can be repaid through debt service, and then we, maybe we can build our cash balance in this fund or transfer more money to the rainy day fund at the end of 2021. But otherwise, the expenditures coming out of this fund are very similar to the last Education Fund. Education expenditures, education expenditures that were formerly part of the General Fund as defined by the State Board of Accounts. So, that's staffing, that's the salaries and benefits of our teaching, our teaching aides and assistants, special education teachers and program assistants that aren't funded through grant funds, our psychologists, our speech-language pathologists, counselors, media, library, teachers and aides, building principals, and their, and their principals, principals' office staff. Our instruction and curriculum department is paid out of this fund in addition to our athletic coaches. We pay for all of our instructional supplies and equipment, media, library books and supplies, building office supplies. Our transfer tuition is paid out of the Education Fund, so the Elkhart Area Career Center bill. I still had Oklon in there, I should have removed that. We used to transfer money into a separate fund and then expend our Oklon monies out of that fund. I've now just incorporated all that into the Education Fund. And it also pays for nursing athletic trainers, professional development, and instructional technology, hardware and software that isn't funded out of the operating referendum, which is actually very little at this point. So, Education Fund Revenue, we unfortunately have a decrease in, in our ADM currently. On the system, we've got about 5,100 students in there, we've got about 50 conflicts. Conflict is when we're claiming a student and another school in the state of Indiana is also claiming that same student. So, I've worked a lot with Carrie Miles to try to give me the best estimate that she, that she can come up with for what our ADM will be on count date next week. So, she told me to go with 5,080 for the fall, and then I estimated 5,000 in the spring of 2021, based on previous trends, which showed us actually decrease between fall and spring. However, this year being slightly different and everything going on with COVID, it, it might actually go up. So, again, I'm being conservative, this revenue is conservative, but I based it on those two count numbers. Basic tuition support, 33.5 million, we'll get around 3.3 million in special education monies. Honors Diploma Grant, we get somewhere between 70 and 90 grand a year. And then, our Career and Technical Education Grant, the, the tuition support worksheets through the IDOE are pushing me a number of about 675,000 right now, but I'm quite confident that there's additional kiddos who are going to show up in some new categories that are going to increase that. So, I've got another line in here for adjustment, and that includes really what I imagine Career and Tech is really going to be, which is about 200,000 more than that 674 number, in addition to any increase in ADM that we'll experience in the fall of 2021. Because again, this is a calendar year budget, they fund us on a fiscal year, so I've actually got to sort of factor in what I think our fall 2021 enrollment will be when I'm looking at our Education Fund revenue for the calendar year. The total tuition support of around $38 million, which is about what we're getting in fit for fiscal year 20. So, our increased dollars per student that we're getting and our, and our having fewer students are sort of offsetting each other right now, if that makes sense. We're getting more money per student, but we have less students, and there's We're getting more money per student, but we have less students, and they're sort of offsetting each other. So tuition support revenue for fiscal year 21, I believe, will be very similar to fiscal year 20. We do have other revenue that comes into this fund, indirect costs from federal grants. We have a number of federal grants. We're allowed to charge those federal grants for the time, business, HR, those sorts of things. We have interest earnings, student fees, and some other miscellaneous things. I estimated that at about 409,000. So total education fund revenue, 38,409,000. Again, that's probably a conservative estimate, but that's what we're estimating for calendar So let's take a look at our expenditures. So our education fund expenditures by classification, I did do a comparison of 2020 to 2021. Not a ton of new expenditures, at least in terms of how I'm budgeting them. I don't have a ton of additional expenditures. I probably estimated a little bit high in 2020. I knew that our revenue was going to be less, so I really went back through the line items, and I tried not to have too much fluff in my budget. But I'm only anticipating about $200,000 more in expenditures for 2021 as I did when I was budgeting for 2020. There's a couple of large changes. You know, you see a big dip in capital outlay and a big increase in supplies, for example. That has to do with the Department of Education and State Board of Accounts changing how they want certain things charged. So there's a whole slew of things that used to be charged to capital outlay, they're now supplies. So that's where that big difference comes from. And then this other purchase services has to do with Oaklawn because we used to transfer the monies into Oaklawn. Well, now those expenses are showing up in salaries and benefits. I wanted to point that out, but generally, again, same with the revenue, expenditures should be very similar to the previous year. So there's the same fund, education fund, and just looking at it by program, regular program, then we have our special education program, summer school, and so on. Again, I just like to give a little bit different way to look at the numbers. And again, similarly, we're not transferring money to Oaklawn anymore. That's why there's a big decrease. That money is now being expended directly from instruction and special programs. So just to explain that a little bit. We also, the reason for the decrease in the support services for school administration, that's where our principals and principals' offices get funded from. We took our assistant principals at the elementary level and moved them into Title I, and then moved our social workers out of Title I into the education fund. So again, just to give a little background on why school admin dropped 200,000. We didn't cut anybody, they're just being paid out of a different fund. So again, to summarize, revenue, less expenditures. We'd have a balance of about almost 6.3 million, but then, as you guys know, we have to transfer money to the operating fund. So again, very conservative on revenues and expenditures, but worst-case scenario, we'd be looking at a deficit in the education fund of about 1.7 million. I'm running out of battery juice. Okay. Operations fund, again, replaces the old capital projects, transportation and bus replacement, historical society, and it includes the noneducational expenditures that were previously part of the general fund. So that's the superintendent's office, the school board, communications, business, HR, operations, custodians, bus drivers, and previously the children's museum. And then other costs, noneducational supplies, custodial supplies, transportation, bus purchases and maintenance, utilities, professional development for non-instructional staff, and then noneducational technology, and then, of course, our property and casualty insurance is all paid from the operations fund. So take a look at operations fund revenue, local property tax. That is, the operations fund is a levy-driven fund. The Department of Local Government Finance tells us what our max levy is, which was last year's, or 2020's maximum levy multiplied by the assessed value growth quotient equals what our 2021 max levy is, which is $3,470,524. I've estimated other local taxes, that's financial institution taxes, commercial vehicle, license excise at $240,000. Receipts from extracurricular, we do charge for some transportation and some other things, so that money comes into the operations fund. And then miscellaneous revenue of about 75,000. Total operations revenue, 3.8 million. More on that later. So again, take a look at the expenditures. You've got salaries, benefits, professional services, and I showed them in comparison to the previous year. Little bit larger of an increase in the operations fund, just mostly because I didn't have as much fluff in it as I think I had in my education fund in 2020. But most of those increases are in salaries, benefits, and supplies. We do have CARES Act money that should cover the majority of any additional supplies needed in regard to COVID-19, but not knowing how long that may last and how long those funds may last, I did increase custodial supplies some. But overall, $335,000 increase from 2020 to 2021. And so just to summarize again, revenue of 3.8 million, expenditures of 10.8 million equals a balance, a negative balance of over $7 million, which is why we have to transfer that education money in, which would leave us, again, with an operating balance of $957,000. However, keep in mind, we won't ever actually get 3.8 million in revenue because of the circuit breaker. And the circuit breaker is estimated at almost 2.5 million, which seems like a high estimate compared to where 2020 was at, but we're estimated to lose another 2.5 million to the circuit breaker. So again, if all those numbers make sense, there's a $1.7 million deficit in the education fund, and then the potential really for about a one and a half million deficit in the operations fund. Again, I think that that's quite a bit worse than what it'll actually come out to be. I think we've got a lot of opportunities with CARES Act money to maybe shift some expenditures. Our instruction department does a fantastic job of getting grants, and not just getting grants, but getting grants for things that save us money, which is awesome. And so again, these are really worst-case scenario-type numbers, just as I brought to the board in previous years. But I do think we can confidently state, we will see a decrease in cash balance in 2021, but it won't be as drastic as what these numbers look like. The next board agenda item is the approval for us to actually advertise or submit, really, because we don't advertise it, we just submit it through Gateway, the notice to taxpayers. This has the funds that we just went through, including the budget estimate. I wouldn't pay a ton of attention to the levy because, again, this is for advertising purposes, and really, the worst thing that I could ever do is advertise a number that's lower than what we could have potentially received in a levy because we can never receive more than I've advertised for. So I, my advertisement is quite high, again, as it is every year, but just keep in mind, this is rate capped, so it won't be 2.5 million, but it'll be capped at the rate. Debt service is capped at the debts that we're repaying, as is the capital debt, education and operation. Education has no levy, and the operations levy is capped at the max levy less the circuit breaker. So really, that column three doesn't really mean a whole lot. But again, the next agenda item, I'll ask for permission to submit that. This is the capital projects plan. Just a reminder, they want us to list out any capital projects in excess of $10,000 that we may incur over the course of the next three years. That's very difficult to estimate. So I, the last several years, I've just included some items that I think would cover us if any of these popped up, so we didn't have to do an amended CPF plan. But there really is no plan to do $100,000 of HVAC or roof or mechanical repairs. But if those sorts of things did pop up and we needed to do them, we now could do them without coming to the board and amending a whole CPF plan. So at least we've got something in our plan that would cover us should those things occur. And then the last slide is our bus replacement plan. This was an error, this should say 2020. This was the bus that we replaced this year. We should actually receive it in the next couple of weeks, but that moves to the bottom of the list. For replacement next year, we're estimating that one of these 2,009,57 passenger Thomases we would like to replace. I think we can hold on to the 2008, 14-passenger activity bus for at least another year. So again, I'm just advocating for one bus replacement in 2021, and we'll push that 2008 activity bus back at least one more year. So only asking for permission to replace one bus in 2021. And quite frankly, if January rolls around and we reevaluate that and it doesn't seem to need replaced, then we would not replace it. But what we're asking the board to approve is at least the replacement of one bus, calendar year 2021. And in the next agenda item, I'll ask for permission to advertise this. So that's really all I have. Again, I didn't want to spend two hours on it, but if there's any questions the board may have, I'm happy to answer them.
Based on the notice, the public notice, the next step on this is going to be September 23rd. We have to, we'll hold a public hearing, correct?
Yeah, and I apologize for that, but the way that the statutes line up and the dates between advertising the Form 3 and adoption, we will need to have a board meeting on the 23rd.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Newman? Thank you. That was very comprehensive and pretty clear, relatively speaking. In that case, we'll go on to item 9.06, permission to advertise bus replacement CPF plans and notice of public hearing. Mr. Newman?
Again, so those last couple of slides included the Form 3 notice to taxpayers, the capital projects plan, and the bus replacement plan for 2021. And I am recommending that the board approve or grant permission to advertise the bus replacement and CPF plans and the notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. That brings you to item 9.07, recommendation to approve change orders with HRP Construction. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Curry, members of the board. At the January 8th, 2020 board meeting, the school corporation awarded the Mishawaka High School Traffic Safety Plan to HRP Construction. This evening, the administration is requesting approval of change order number three in conjunction with this project. The total amount for change order number three, or the net amount, is $122,892. That includes five deducts and 28 additional cost items. The, I believe the board has an itemized list or has a copy of the change order, and I'm happy to answer any questions on individual items. However, this whole change order sort of, to me, breaks down into two categories, and that is, A, being things that were uncovered once we started digging that we really have no choice in, and they all sort of pertain to the storm sewer and essentially what the city was recommending or saying needed to be done once we started digging. So again, items that weren't part of the original bid because we weren't aware that they were items until the time came. And then the second category is really change order requests from school city of Mishawaka administration in the courtyard. And those courtyard change orders tally about 60 grand, and those are going to be covered with the donated funds from Rosemary Claire that were donated specifically for the courtyard at Mishawaka High School. So very little of that additional courtyard work is going to end up being paid from the bond funds. But again, I did want to point out that's what the majority of these items are. They either fall into one category or the other. We did also replace the courtyard stone steps that led up to the main doors at the high school. They were actually tilted back. It was a safety issue. Water would pool, it would freeze. We had a patron fall on there last year. That was about nine or 10, almost $10,000. So again, happy to answer any questions on any individual line items, but that's sort of the overarching issues that are being covered by this change order. So if there are no other questions, it is my recommendation that we approve the change order with HRP Construction in the amount of $122,892, and that'll be paid through a combination of the 2019 first mortgage bond and those donated funds.
I move for approval.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Takes us to item 9.08, recommendation to approve memorandum of understanding with the Mishawaka Education Association. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Curry. The administration is seeking approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Mishawaka Education Association. The MOU addresses the timeline for the payment of certain ECA stipends due to issues caused by COVID-19. This MOU states that ECA stipend payments for certain activities will be paid after completion of that activity. Under normal circumstances, bargaining members have the option of being paid their stipend over the course of their contract. This change is necessary for the 2020-2021 school year in order to avoid a situation where the school corporation has to dock a bargaining unit member's pay due to being paid for an activity that may not eventually take place due to COVID-19. So this is an MOU that is only for the 2020-2021 school year, and the MEA did ratify on their end last evening. It is my recommendation that the board approve the MOU with the MEA as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the recommendation to the MOU. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Takes us into, thank you, Mr. Newman. That takes us into the leadership and policy section of the agenda. Item 10.01, first reading of new and revised policies. Ms. Pettit.
Good evening. We just have two policies here. Number 8450.01, protective facial coverings during the pandemic epidemic. It's a new policy, and it is based on guidance from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The policy provides coverage for students, corporation employees, and volunteers and visitors. The next policy is 5830 fundraising, and we just revise this a little bit. The language is being changed so that all fundraiser requests must be approved by the superintendent. I also have a technical revision. We have revisions that need to, we need to make to newly adopted policy 262301, test and security provisions for statewide assessments. Technical revisions do not require a vote, however, I need to inform you of the slight changes. The corporation test coordinator, CTC, is our director of school services and assessments, not student services and assessments. And also on the first page, it should say school test coordinator, not building test coordinator.
Thank you. Any questions in connection with that presentation? If not, we'll go on to item 10.02, teacher appreciation grant policy, number 3220.01. Ms. Pettit.
The administration is not recommending any changes to policy 322001 on the distribution of proceeds from the teacher appreciation grant. This policy requires an annual adoption by the board in order to receive and distribute the proceeds from the teacher appreciation grant.
Are there any questions for Ms. Pettit in connection with this item? Not? Is there a motion to approve, there's a recommendation to approve it as in its existing form, correct? Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to readopt policy number 3220.01 in its existing form for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Pettit. And it takes us to the final section of the agenda, communications, 11.01, public announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees will be held on October 14th, 2020, at the Administrative Center, 1402 South Main Street here in Mishawaka, Indiana. And based on Mr. Newman's presentation, we will also be having a September 23rd, I presume at 6:00, public hearing on the budget process. Is there anything else to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending. adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Have a good night, guys.